Okay, now we can officially begin. I'm going to gavel the meeting to order and welcome you all this evening to our March 7 regular scheduled council meeting. Council members, thank you for all being here this evening. We have several items on the agenda and tonight we're gonna, as soon as we complete the preliminary items, have several presentations that we're gonna make. So, the meeting is called to order and I will ask our town clerk, if you will, to call the roll at this time.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Present.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Dellinger. Oh yeah, okay. Ms. Clerk, could you call Mr. Dellinger out?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Dellinger. I apologize.
All right.
Got ahead of myself.
Yeah, all right. That's not on the same order. I think it's been several weeks ago and the assistant town clerk was sitting back there and I referred to her as assistant town manager or something like that, I believe. So she told me the next day. I sort of promoted her on the spot, I guess. At any rate, that didn't have too much to do with it. Okay, the meeting is officially called to order. The roll's been called. We will now recognize Mr. Dellinger, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Stand if you can and will, and he will also be responsible for our invocation. Mr. Dellinger.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me as you are so inclined. Heavenly Father, give us the heart to see and be moved by those who suffer. Move us to action and free us from helplessness, from the helplessness we can sometimes feel, so that we may help our neighbors, both in our own community and neighbors in spirit so far away. Give us the wisdom to recognize the truth, your truth, that we are your hands to act on this earth to serve those who suffer and to deliver them from peril and from those who endanger them and wish them harm. Give us the wisdom to see those who would seek to divide us rather than unite us and the fortitude to call them out through our own actions to bring people together. Be always with those who stand in harm's way to protect the innocent, especially the children. Help our mayor, council, and staff rise to every occasion, to be there for our community and all its people in everything they do, in your name and to your glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Dellinger. Okay, as is our usual custom, we will, first of all, see if there are persons here who wish to make petitions or comments to the council. I'll just explain this briefly through this written paragraph here. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in the regular agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. It's the ideal thing to do. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will refer to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who signed up this evening for petitions or comments? Okay, there are none? All right. However, if you are here and you either didn't sign up or forgot to, if you came for the purpose of using this time to make comments or petition to the council, I'll recognize you at this time. Is there anyone? Okay. All right, thank you very much. So, council, we will now go to the next item of business, which is the adoption of the agenda. You all have it there before you, I believe, so I will entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
So move.
Stock it.
Okay, motion made, properly seconded. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Okay, now we come to the part of our meeting this evening where we have some presentations, and I want to first of all, recognize Pastor Ben Acton, who is here on behalf of the MLK Committee, committee I've served on some in the past, and he's going to present the Martin Luther King Jr. Dream in Action Award to Dr. Laiswell, but I don't want to steal your thunder, so if you will, sir, proceed.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you on behalf of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Committee for giving us this time on the docket and for even having us as a regular town committee. It is a great privilege and honor to serve with that group and to continue to celebrate and honor Dr. King's legacy annually with our celebration event that has been aided the past two years by the Communications Department here of the town, since we've had to do those online, and also for giving us the space to present this year's Dream in Action Award. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb "agree" to serve. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love. These words from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. speak powerfully to our collective call as human beings, regardless of color, gender, or creed, to put dreams of love, justice, and peace into action. And these are days where such dreams in action are sorely needed because the forces of division are strong, whether they be halfway across the world in Ukraine or just right down the streets in our own neighborhood. Inequality, pain, violence, racial and ethnic discrimination, among other evils, are still unfortunately all too real, too present. Dr. King's words remind us, though, that we have the greatness needed to overcome. Greatness not based on knowledge or achievement, but on being in tune with the rhythms of service. Therefore, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Committee has identified Dr. Cleopatra Laiswell and Community Navigators, Community Builders, the youth service organization of which she is the founder and CEO/ Director. They are drum majors in this regard of service. Now, Dr. Laiswell knows a thing or two about subject-verb agreement, having shining wisdom in several degrees that reflect a learner's heart, including a master's in mental health counseling and a doctorate degree in education, that from Walden University. But her true greatness lies in her heart of grace and her soul generated by love, shown in so many ways, but especially through CNCB, which she started in 2018. CNCB consists of community youth builders, some of whom you see in the chamber here with us this evening, as well as their adult navigators, working together on community-based learning projects where young people learn valuable entrepreneurship, leadership, and life skills, as they strive to make dreams for a loving and just community a reality. In the last two years, CNCB has done much within our community and beyond, and time does not permit me to share an exhaustive list, but here are a few highlights. Over the past two years, CNCB has partnered with Home Depot and local fraternities and sororities to beautify the Garner Road Community Center, with Home Depot providing a grant that assisted with the materials for that project. In the summer of 2020, CNCB instituted a We Care Corona Awareness Relief Effort, hosted in the Office Max parking lot in the Garner Town Square Shopping Plaza. There, CNCB collected and put together some 300 health kits full of hygiene supplies, hand sanitizer, and masks, which were then donated to South Wilmington Street Homeless Shelter, RIN House, a homeless runaway and crisis intervention haven for youth 10 to 17 years old, Bella Rosa Nursing and Rehab in Garner, Pruitt Health Nursing and Rehab in Raleigh, and Veterans Helping Veterans Heal in Winston-Salem. This project also was one of three award-winning entries CNCB has made in the Lead for Change Challenge. Lead for Change is a national program that awards grants to middle and high school student leadership programs. You can see some of CNCB's reflections about Lead for Change via video on the Town of Garner's Facebook page. CNCB, to date, has won $20,000 in grants from Lead for Change because of the projects they have done in our community. And they've been able to use that money also to put towards other projects, such as the Annual Christmas Town Event, a community festival with games, a train ride, different vendors, the purpose of all of which is to create a sense, even in the coldness of winter, of hospitality, connection, friendship, a better community. Finally, this past summer, a brand-new project emerged on social justice. CNCB responded to the ongoing conversation in our nation about race and policing by hosting a community forum featuring area lawyers, a judge, and law enforcement officials moderated by youth builders, along with Laura Levine of WRAL Durham. Together, the young people and adults gathered, explored meaningful questions about the nature and process of our justice system, its promise, its challenges, and the way we all can work to impart more equity, particularly racial equity, into the system. That summer forum on social justice was hosted by the church I serve, First Presbyterian Church of Garner, and we have been proud to be the gathering place for CNCB since their inception and to see firsthand their greatness unfold. But don't just take my word on their greatness. Here are also the words from a few of the youth builders themselves. "CNCB has taught me how to communicate with people and that any dream you want can come true," says builder Tyann. "You can talk to Dr. Laiswell about anything and she understands," says builder Xena. "The community here is like family that strives for you to do better, not only for the community, but also for yourself." "Dr. Laiswell's passion is so infectious," says builder Genesis. And to that, builder Ryan adds, "Dr. Laiswell is a loving and caring person who cares for all and never misses a beat for standing up for what she believes in." Friends, if that is not greatness, not love, not grace, not the dream in action, I don't know what is. So without further ado, it is my great pleasure, on behalf of the Town of Garner's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Committee, to present this year's Dream in Action Award to Dr. Cleopatra Laiswell and Community Navigators, Community Builders.
Thank you, Mr. Acton. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, now, I'll recognize Dr. Laiswell. I've spoken to her on the phone, but I think this is our first in-person meeting, so it's a pleasure to have you with us, and the mic is yours.
Thank you so much. To you, Town Mayor, Mayor Marshburn, and to the town manager, Rodney Dickerson, and to all of the town council members and all other dignitaries present, greetings, and thank you so much for the opportunity to accept this prestigious award tonight during the town council meeting. I would like to thank you, Pastor Ben. Really, that was an awesome intro. Thank you so much. And the Martin Luther King Committee for selecting me to be among the various leaders and organizations that have the passion and the mission to keep his dream alive and in action. What an honor and a privilege it is to be recognized as a recipient of this most honorable award. So as I reflect back on Martin Luther King's speech, many of his words actually resonate with CNCB's themes, and here is some of his words. "We must not allow our creative protests to generate into physical violence. Must not lead us to distrust all white people, for many of our white brothers, as evidenced by their presence here today, have come to realize that their destiny is tied up with our destiny. We cannot walk alone, and as we walk, we must make the pledge that we always march ahead." He said, "We must not walk alone. We need a community." So, in 2018, that's when I started Community Navigators, Community Builders, a nonprofit organization that works with kids in the community. We started out with, at the First Presbyterian Church. Thank God for them allowing us to come and meet with our youth once a month. We're grateful for Dr. Reynard allowing us to use his land to do community festivals such as Christmas Town, and the various local businesses, such as Papa John's and all those restaurants that allow, actually do in-kind donations for our youth. So what is our mission? Our mission and our goal is to establish and develop community youth leaders, and we cannot do it alone. We can't walk this walk alone. As Pastor Ben so elegantly informed you about our past events, we provide learning opportunities for our students as they work along with their peers and as well as the supported navigators to plan community events. We cannot walk alone. So this year, we have been so blessed to be able to walk with partners such as the North Carolina Management of Project Institute and our volunteers, so that they can expose our youth to leadership skills and entrepreneurship skills. We're also going to do three major projects, which are social justice, where we teach our kids about addressing social issues, along with our environmental sustainability, where our kids will learn about growing items, growing produce, and actually teaching their peers how to grow so we can share with our community. And our famous Christmas Town, we enjoy bringing our community together in a festive way. So, we cannot walk alone. We need the village, and I thank God for the Town of Garner. So, as I accept this award, I acknowledge that everyone in this room is a part of our village. So as Martin Luther King has stated, that we can't walk alone, we're not walking alone. We have community support that will help our kids. So I invite you to be a part of Community Navigators, Community Builders. If you want to hear, have, learn furthermore about our organization, anyone in our green shirts can actually give you a brochure, or you can find us on the website. And again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and God bless you.
Thank you. For those inspiring words. I do believe we want to get a picture. Is that right, Mr. Mercer?
Yes. Thank you.
been part of this committee, I guess from the outset, so good to see you, Mr. Rogers. Yeah, there's Wilma. Good to see you. Yeah, thank you, Dwight. Should we get a picture, Rodney, of you and Dr. Laiswell with the present? Excuse me. Yeah. Well, I mean, you think so? Okay. I should say that, Dr. Laiswell, we look forward to hearing further of some of the items you're doing. I should mention that she's been in touch with our town manager and sort of secondarily me, but I believe there's a plan to have them use this council chamber and maybe even this desk, and they're gonna bring some of the young people in here and let them, I think, take charge. There's the name of a town that you're gonna use, and they're gonna conduct a meeting and so forth. So, anything we can do to facilitate that, we'll be happy to try to do it. So, look forward to doing that and other things you may do in the future, okay? Thank you so much. Okay, anything from council on this? If not, I'll go to the next proclamation areas. All right, at this time, there are two proclamations that are somewhat interrelated, and I've asked two of our council members to share those, and also with us to receive these is Mr. Eric Oth, sitting there on the front row. You can stay there right now if you want to, and so we're gonna present those to you, and Eric, when he speaks, can give a little more about his status. He's affiliated with NC State, I know that.
services, individualized person-centered supports, and other forms of long-term assistance that are individually planned and coordinated. Whereas the disability experience is a natural part of life and is valued as part of our rich diversity. Whereas disability is a social construct, the problem is not the medical condition that resides within the individual, but the problem is that society does not create welcoming, supporting, and inclusive environments, policies, and/or systems for all to promote equality and acceptance in all areas of life, including schools, places of employment, and in our communities. Whereas the most effective way to increase awareness is through everyone's openness to learn and acknowledge that there are systemic barriers that reduce the likelihood of those with disabilities enjoying equitable experiences and living independent, productive lives within their communities. Whereas policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and equitable experiences be offered to all individuals, including those with developmental disabilities. Whereas citizens should do all in their power to recognize the value of the disability experience in our lives and the valued role it has in our rich diversity. Whereas policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and equitable experiences be offered to all individuals, including those with TBI. Whereas citizens should do all in their power to recognize the value of the disability experience in our lives and the valued role it has in our rich diversity. Recognize the barriers presented to those with traumatic brain injury across all aspects of their lives. Create ways to include everyone, especially those with developmental disabilities, to be fully included in all aspects of life. Understand the losses, which are financial, spiritual, human rights, contributions to community and otherwise, when our communities segregate and create barriers for those with disabilities. Demand policymakers no longer invest in segregation and create inclusive, equitable policies and systems for all. Now, therefore, Ken Marshburn, Mayor of the Town of Garner, does hereby proclaim March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and galvanize efforts that will lead our communities and policymakers to create real system changes, so people with developmental disabilities will enjoy equitable, inclusive lives.
Okay, thanks so much, Ms. Behringers. And in just a minute, I'll have Eric come up, but I'm going to ask Mr. Dellinger, if he will, to read the second proclamation, TBI. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas traumatic brain injury, TBI, is an injury to the brain occurring after birth as a result of an external force to the head, and whereas the condition is often the result of a fall, an assault, a motor vehicle accident, being struck and/or cause, and/or other causes, known and unknown. Whereas over 200,000 North Carolinians currently live with a TBI-related disability, and whereas the condition affects the lives of not only the individual and survivor, but also the parents, spouses, siblings, extended family, friends, health care providers, insurance companies, attorneys, educators, government agencies, and employers. And whereas ongoing support is often needed to support the individual and their daily life skills, and whereas TBI can sometimes be called an invisible condition, creating many challenges with stigma, awareness, understanding, and acceptance of individuals with TBI. And whereas the most effective way to increase awareness is through everyone's openness to learn and acknowledge that there are systemic barriers that reduce the likelihood of those with TBI enjoying equitable experiences and living independent, productive lives within their community. And whereas policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and equitable experiences be offered to all individuals, including those with TBI. And whereas citizens should do all in their power to: recognize the value of the disability experience in our lives and the valued role it has in our rich diversity; recognize the barriers presented to those with traumatic brain injury across all aspects of their lives; create ways to include everyone, especially those with traumatic brain injury, to be fully included in all aspects of life; understand the losses, financial, spiritual, human rights, contributions to the community and otherwise, when our communities segregate and create barriers for those with traumatic brain injury. Demand policymakers no longer invest in segregation and create inclusive, equitable policies and systems for all. Now, therefore, Ken Marshburn, Mayor of Garner, does hereby proclaim March 2022 as Traumatic Brain Injury Awareness Month, and galvanize efforts that will lead our community and policymakers to create real system changes, so people with traumatic brain injuries will enjoy equitable, inclusive lives.
Okay, thank you so much. And at this time, I want to recognize Mr. Eric Oth, I believe. If you will go to the podium back there. After you make your comments, I'll join you down front for a picture and a presentation.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Eric Oth. I'm a student at North Carolina State University. It's my senior year. I'm a non-traditional student, and I'm doing my internship at Abound Health. And on behalf of, Abound Health is an agency that provides care for people with various types of disabilities, including intellectual and developmental disabilities, as well as traumatic brain injuries. On behalf of Abound Health, we'd like to thank you for recognizing March as Intellectual and Developmental Disability, as well as TBI Awareness. We appreciate your support and efforts to promote awareness and acceptance. Individuals with ADD and TBI add so much to the communities they live, work, and play in, and we are thankful for the recognition and support of these people that we serve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your patience while we took care of those very important items, and thank those of you who came as part of the presentations. You can stick around if you care to, but we also will understand that you may need to leave, so if you need to do that at this time, that's fine, whatever is your pleasure. We will now move on with our agenda, and the next item of business is the consent agenda. There are several items on there, as all of you know, council. So unless anybody desires to pull an item for further discussion, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
A motion properly made and seconded. All in favor, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, no? And there is none. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have another group here this evening, so under item I, there are no public hearings noted. So item I is new and old business. Garner Grows Community Garden at Thompson Park is the title of this next segment. And let's see, Ms. Jones, are you leading that, and/or Ms. McCo, our parks director? Sort of both, or she goes first, right? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be super brief. What's in front of you, it's a resolution to authorize the town manager to negotiate a contract for the use of Thompson Road Park, a portion of it for the community garden project that we have been developing with Garner Grows. That's, and we're excited to start the first step towards making this project a reality.
Okay, thank you so much. I hadn't necessarily prepared to read this. Do I need to, well, let's hear from my attorney, I guess, in regards to this process.
Yes, so under North Carolina state law, any lease over a year of town property has to be approved by council after a requisite amount of public notice, and we've provided the public notice as posted on the town's website. This resolution would authorize the manager to negotiate and execute a lease with the nonprofit Garner Grows, subject to approval of a modified site plan for the Thompson Road Park, and then outlining the cost, maintenance, and other aspects to show that there is a public purpose and public benefit as a result of this lease of town-owned property. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any questions about the resolution.
Okay, I'll inquire of council in that regard. Just before I do, let's see, there are three of you. Are there others here with community? Okay, all right. Good to see you all as well. Council, any questions for either our town attorney or Ms. Maria at this time? And I'll start with Mr. Vance on my right.
Questions?
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Looking at the language, asked the attorney if she thinks it's sufficiently broad to do the negotiations necessary with Garner Grows.
Yes, if there would be significant changes, then that would be brought back to council to entertain, but this actually would authorize the town manager to negotiate the lease, the terms of the lease, as well as to ensure that there's public benefit provided from the arrangement.
Ms. Behringers, anything? Mr. Singleton?
Sir.
And Mr. Matthews?
I'm just glad we could put all this together and see it move forward, and I think Mr. Singleton mentioned, let me take that fence all the way around the property on account of the deer, if I remember correctly, sir.
I only recommend whenever they do it to do that.
Just looking out for you.
Okay, so I believe it would be in order at this point to ask...
If you don't mind, could I just make that one correction?
Yes, please. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to make it a little more broad. And on the last "whereas" statement, it has donate, and it has a specific amount. We're going to strike the approximately 10% of, and just have that read donate produce grown to other, because sometimes when they donate, it's measured in pounds, so there's no need to have an amount there. That's something we can work out in having the lease and negotiate on a year-by-year basis if we need to. So that's the only correction I'd make to this.
Okay. Council, you have heard the town manager's edit, or change of wording there? Any concern or question about that? Okay, hearing none. I believe the next item would be a motion to adopt and approve this resolution. So is there a motion of that effect from council?
So moved?
Socket.
Okay, and we'll refer this as Resolution Number 20222480, and motion's been made and properly seconded. So if you favor this resolution, I wasn't going to read it for the sake of time, but you all have it there before you. So if you approve this resolution, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And no opposition, vote no, and they heard none? Okay, so it is so ordered, and thank you. I'd spoken to a couple of you before we started. Did, yeah, you want to make a few comments? Go right ahead.
I'll be the microphone.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Marshburn and council, town staff, my name is Pam Fadia. I live at 1319 Sycamore Drive here in Garner for 62 years today. I am a member of the leadership group of Garner Grows Community Garden. We came before council on August 3 of 2021 to request that the UDO be changed to better recognize community gardens and to consider locating a community garden on the town property. In November 2021, the UDO was amended, and today council is discussing the lease with Garner Grows to operate a community garden in the Thompson Road Park. We thank the town council, and the town staff especially, for working with us over these past eight months, and for helping us to further our mission to teach residents how to raise produce and to lead healthier lifestyles. We look forward to building a product...
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Pam. And as I noted before the meeting started, I'm going to be talking with you, you folks, about monarch butterflies, and I guess it's a nationwide effort to, to recognize this species and to encourage mayors to, to sign a pledge, which I'm going to do, and I can use your help in some of the...
We definitely have done that for many years. We grow crops that they like to live on, and they'll lay their little pupas, and we'll capture them and put them in something and hatch them out, and then we'll take them back to the garden and release them.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll call you when we're going to have a release day, and y'all can all come out.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We're happy to work with you on this, sure enough. So, and thank the town staff.
Work with these guys, too.
Oh, okay, all right.
We're going to tap these guys, too. We're going to work with these guys.
Sure. They're, they're a good resource, I think, Ben. So thank you so much. We'll look forward to the good work that you do. Okay, I believe that's all we have under new business, so we will move to committee reports at this time. I'm not aware of any, but council, any committees you're serving on, anybody have a report this evening? None? None here? Okay. All right, thank you all, and have a good evening. Managers' reports, I recognize our town manager.
Mayor, Town Council, manager reports, you have Garner info in your packet, and also the building and permit report. It's in the back there, I believe. Let's see, where is that? Yes, so it's showing some of the more recent permits, and I know we had talked about trying to get this in a more graphic format, so we'll work on, on doing that.
I do have one, I can wait you finish. I have one question under the, under the reports, under Garner info, I guess, I wanted to just get a little...
Okay. Yeah, I'm finished, you can go ahead and ask.
Well, it, it has to do with the, with the problem with the slide over at the Lake Benson Playground area there, and a concern there that's broken, and then the comments I'm reading there, I think, are fairly self-explanatory, but it doesn't really say when that might be fixed. I guess I'm sensitive to the children over there, and when my grandchildren come to town, if something doesn't work there, I say, "Well, grandpa, why don't you fix it?" So, but anyway. Can, can you give me an update on that? I understand that the manufacturer of this, of this slide doesn't make them anymore, is that right?
They don't make the slide, and so the parts are not readily available, so we're working with the installer and trying to get, you know, a, a solution for getting it back in order. So we're just waiting to hear back.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have a time period. I can reach out to Public Works Director, have Jody reach out to see if there's a time estimate on that, but like some of the equipment we have out there, you know, after it's been out there for a while, it's no longer supported. They come up with new models, and it's harder to get parts. Sometimes we can fabricate, fabricate parts to replace it, but I'm not sure in this case if we'll be able to do that.
Okay, well, that's understandable. Hopefully, we can get it fixed. There are a lot of kids out there this time of the year, particularly as the spring and summer approach.
We'll try to come up with a solution before the warm season gets here.
Okay, sure. I'm sorry I interrupted you. Carry on with, was that it?
I have a couple of other things. Just wanted to kind of give you an update on the budget. So we have had the departments turn in their departmental budgets. We'll be starting some review sessions pretty soon, in the coming weeks. They'll present their budgets to the budget team, and we'll try to narrow some of those things down, prioritize. We do plan to get Davenport to provide a financial update at the March work session. We believe it's important that we look at it holistically with the CIP, the American Rescue Plan dollars that we'll have available, and also our bond, and try to figure out, you know, the best way to, the most beneficial way to use the funds that we have in the, in the framework of all three of those. And we'll have a budget hearing on April the 4th, just basically telling the public that we're working on the budget and see if there's any input. And then we'll have a recommended budget to you by the end of April. And then with that, we'll start having council budget review sessions starting in May, and hope to get it approved on June the 6th.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Manager, and appreciate you sharing those time frames. Yes, sir.
There are a lot of kids out there this time of the year, particularly as the spring and summer approach.
We'll try to come up with a solution before the warm season gets here.
Okay, sure. I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Carry on with, was that it?
I have a couple of other things. Just wanted to kind of give you an update on the budget. So we have had the departments turn in their departmental budgets. We'll be starting some review sessions pretty soon in the coming weeks. They'll present their budgets to the budget team, and we'll try to narrow some of those things down, prioritize. We do plan to get Davenport to provide a financial update at the March work session. We believe it's important that we look at it holistically with the CIP, the American Rescue Plan dollars that we'll have available, and also our bond, and try to figure out, you know, the best way to, the most beneficial way to use the funds that we have in the framework of all three of those. And we'll have a budget hearing on April the 4th, just basically telling the public that we're working on the budget and see if there's any input. And then we'll have a recommended budget to you by the end of April. And then with that, we'll start having council budget review sessions starting in May and hope to get it approved on June the 6th.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Manager, and appreciate you sharing those timelines. Yes, sir.
Just had a question on the rescue plan dollars. Has everything been finalized as to what it can be used for and cannot, or?
Not yet. That'll be part of the discussion, looking at all of the bond projects we have. We have bond projects, we got CIP projects, and we have some projects that we've already spent money on that we are looking to maybe see if we want to, you know, finance those in different ways. And then we also have that list that we gave you. So we haven't finalized the list yet. So, I mean, we can't do that without your input, so we'll bring that back to you. But the, without getting into too much detail, but there are, there is going to be some flexibility in how we use the funds because of the new rules that came out, so we'll come back and explain some of that to you at that time.
Okay, let me go around the loop here and see. Mr. Singleton, do you have any questions?
I just wanted, Ms., I guess someone's asking about the, maybe 12th meeting, budget meeting. I'm assuming that'll start like at 8:30 in the morning and go until 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10 o'clock, however long it takes.
Correct, similar to what we have done in the past. And then we could always use the work session in May to follow up, the second, the second meeting or the work session in May to follow up.
Listen, I remember when we would come in at some o'clock at night and work till 10 or 10:30 and do it four or five times, till we went to the one-day thing. Phew.
Ms. Behringer, any questions?
I think, yeah, I think I've explained this to y'all before, but we don't have a budget manager right now. We held off on advertising for that because it, the timing was right at the beginning of budget season, and we just felt like we wouldn't get the candidates that we wanted because they're not, most candidates, legitimate candidates, are not going to leave their organizations at the middle or beginning or middle of budget season. So we're kind of doing it by committee, tapping into Jody's expertise and John's and mine and David back there. So we're kind of going to, you know, make a team effort out of it, and with the department heads, we'll, we'll get you a balanced budget. And we'll, we'll look to advertise those positions toward the end of the spring, so hopefully get somebody in here early next fiscal year.
We will count on you bringing us a balanced budget. You always have. Thank you. Let's see, did, I didn't get to everybody down here. Mr. Dellinger, do you have any?
Just reflecting on the previous years and the budget, and now having a budget director, I think it might be worth our while to even pencil in an April date, because I know it takes us several iterations to kind of get through everything, and then we've got these other pots of money to deal with on top of our normal budget. And I know any programs that we might want to craft relative to the American Rescue dollars are going to be new in figuring out how to, one, do the research on whatever we may want to do and then allocate the money. I think it just might be good to have another day scheduled even earlier and not wait until kind of, if we're looking for early June, I know we still have all of June to do it. But I think they're just very unique pots of money, and without a dedicated budget manager, I want to make sure things can be iterated as we have our input and have it iterated early enough so that it's not too much of a burden to try to cram everything into a May meeting and then have to, I'm just trying to be cognizant of how complicated the budget might be this year and the staffing limitations, so.
So it'll be an input session because the, we won't have the budget to you until the April 29th? So you mean another input session prior to that?
When's the first one? The work session?
May the 12th.
Oh, May the...
I had something for April 4th. What was that?
Oh, that's a, that's a public hearing for the public, just to announce that we're working on the budget.
We'll be talking about some of this in the March work session as well that will involve ARP, so that'll be an earlier opportunity.
Well, I mean, even if we dedicate a significant portion of our work sessions leading up to it, that would be helpful if we can make sure those are on the agenda and mentally know we're going to talk about the budget for a couple hours, because I think it gives us time to think about it and give feedback and not come out of the blue to you guys as I'm apt to do.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the earlier the better, because we're going to be like, yeah, you know, parsing everything down and trying to make sure it stays balanced. So, yeah, the earlier we get input, the better.
We did, we did lock down the March work session so that we have the health renewal benefits that were already on the schedule, but that and this discussion about budget ARP, CIP being the only thing so that we could spend as much time as council wanted to spend on that.
Did we firm that date up? I know a tentative date was circulated, see how we looked at, is this the one in March we're talking about?
No, Councilman, the May 12 budget work session, we just got confirmation that all council members are available, so that'll be the full-day budget work session.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews, what I was referring to was your regular March work session, so no additional date to add for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was May 12?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll see how far we get on the 29th, and we'll, if we need to add a date in April, we can, we can do that.
I think I can, well, I know I said I can do that. You'll have to give me a five-minute interlude to call my only daughter out in Colorado, whose birthday is that day, so as long as I can do that, that'll be okay. Okay.
One other announcement?
Go ahead, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
No comment.
We have a comment that his birthday is June 6th, so make sure we put that on the June 6th agenda.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Remember what June 6th, everyone else remember what June 6th is?
Yep.
Okay, was there any, any other information? You said you had no comment?
No comment, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Keep, keep, keep me, keep me straight. Okay, I appreciate it. All right?
And I believe you have this at the diocese there.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask about that.
Vandoor Springs Elementary Walks to School.
Yeah, tell me more.
So they've invited the fire department and members of the community to come out. The first Walk to School Day event held that morning of the 25th, and the staff and students will be out there. And they'll have about 40 to 50 total walkers per the school, but we really, let me see. So they'll have the fire department bringing a truck for the kids to look at and just have different events just as a walk, a walk to school, promote walking, walking to school.
Are we invited to walk with them?
7:45, meet at the Garner Advent Christian Church. And, yeah, you're invited to walk with the kids.
Great.
It's something Gabby, Gabby has coordinated in conjunction with the, I guess, school, I don't know.
Safe routes to school. I was just going to mention that our partners with Safe Routes to School coordinated this, and we're helping get the word out about it. And they're the same folks we're partnering with on looking at some improvements to some of the routes that get us to Vandoor Springs as well.
Okay, so counsel, note that on your calendar. I'd love to have all of you come out, if you can, on that morning, 7:45, March 25. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
That's it?
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to recognize our town attorney, Terry Jones, at this time, who has some information to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last fall, Wake County Board of County Commissioners adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance. And as you all probably know, under state law, a county ordinance is not applicable within municipal limits unless the town council would opt into that ordinance. As, and I'll explain a little bit later, but Wake County is seeking to see if there's some direction from town councils to whether they're interested in participating in this program as they are negotiating a contract with Campbell University at this time. So I'm not asking to take any action, but if you have any feedback about your inclination to opt in to this ordinance on behalf of the residents and businesses of the town of Garner, I would provide that feedback back to Wake County. So I'll give you a little bit of information about the ordinance and the program, and again, then you can ask questions or give any feedback that you have at this time. So the nondiscrimination ordinance affects three areas of life. One is contracts, so under this Wake County ordinance, anyone bidding for a contract with Wake County government would have to sign a certification that they will abide by the nondiscrimination pledges. The other is in the area of employment, and the third is in the area of public accommodations. So any business that's open to the public, hotels, restaurants, shops, is also prohibited from discriminating. And so the protected classes within this nondiscrimination ordinance are somewhat broader than what are currently in federal law under Title VII and some of the other federal civil rights As you may recall, President Obama had expanded some of the protected classes in executive orders. That was then contracted by President Trump, and at this point, President Biden has not expanded that, the classes of protected, the protected classes at this time, and neither has Congress taken any action in this area. However, as you know, state and local governments can provide protection stronger than what the federal government provides to their citizens. So basically, there's a, I think I counted like 15 protected classes. The newest one is on hair, natural hair and hairstyles, which is not one that's covered by the federal government at this time. So what would happen is Wake County has created a portal for complaints, so any resident of Wake County who would be... So right now, it would be outside of the municipal limits except for the city of Raleigh, who has opted into the ordinance already, would file a complaint on the portal. The county manager's office would determine whether the ordinance applies to the activity, so it would have to be a business, an employer, within the jurisdiction of the county ordinance. If they determined that it does look like there, there was a discriminatory activity that occurred, it would then be referred to Campbell University for what's called conciliation. So Campbell University would invite both the complainant and then the respondent, the business or the employer who is being accused of the discriminatory activity, to a voluntary confidential conciliation process. If the parties are able to resolve their differences, they would enter into what's like a settlement agreement that would then be enforceable between those two parties as a binding contract. Wake County would also have the ability to bring enforcement action, seeking an injunction, either a prohibitory injunction to stop someone from the discriminatory activity or potentially a mandatory injunction requiring some kind of training or change in action or behavior. There would be no criminal or civil penalties associated with any violations of the Wake County nondiscrimination ordinance. So if town council is inclined, you would adopt an ordinance to allow the county ordinance to, you would adopt a resolution, allowing the county ordinance to be applicable within the town limits of Garner and also enter into an interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement would basically outline what the county's responsible for and what the municipalities are responsible for. At this point, for the next fiscal year, well, for now until June 30th, and then for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, there would be no charge to the municipalities to participate in this program. Depending on how many municipalities participate and depending, I suppose, on how many complaints that are received and go through the conciliation process at Campbell University, they're estimating right now that Garner's contribution in the future would be $2,000 a year. Again, they're, they're saying no charge for the upcoming fiscal year, but then potentially starting July 1st of 2024, that there would be a contribution required from the town of Garner if it participates in the program. At this point, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
And could I, generally speaking, the $2,000 proportion share that we would pay, that's, I mean, would that be thought of basically as paying for legal counsel or legal assistance should a discrimination be filed?
It's, it's basically, for the most part, to pay for the contract with Campbell University to provide the conciliation services. My understanding is the county manager's office is, you know, absorbing the overhead of just implementing the portal, the online portal and looking at the complaints that come in and making sure that they fall within the ordinance parameters.
Okay, thank you.
And then that contribution is a per capita, so the smaller jurisdictions are paying less. Obviously, Raleigh is paying the largest share of that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yeah, I'm going to recognize.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Phil.
I just got a couple of questions here. How many, is there a deadline on this, and how many other communities other than Raleigh are participating on this?
So at this point, I believe Morrisville is considering it at their second meeting of the month, so the 22nd of the month. Cary and I believe Apex are looking at, considering it at their April meeting. I had heard that Knightdale had opted in, but I'm not sure that that was accurate. So at this point, only Raleigh has, has...
Firm commitment.
Formally said. I believe that Cary is going to opt in, but they haven't taken a vote on that yet, so...
Can we get a list of all of these? You said it was like 17 of them or whatever it is that...
The protected classes?
Yes.
Yes, they're, they're in the ordinance, but, and in the cover page in there, but if you want me to read them out, I can go ahead and read them.
No, there's no need to do that, no.
Yeah, they're listed here on the, this cover page, yeah. Yeah, Phil, if you need to see them right here, on my page, 56.
Okay, I like to swash on my laptop over here, so.
Okay. So, you know, in addition to what you traditionally think of race and age and gender and, there's sexual orientation, there's genetic information, there's also veteran status, familial status, marital status. I probably missed a couple of those, but religious belief, disability, and then the hair and, and hairstyles.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Singleton?
Yes, Ms. Jones, a question about the procedure. Now, if two parties go through the conciliation process, and you said there'll be no civil or criminal penalties, and they go through the process and don't reach an agreement, what happens?
So if they do not reach an agreement, and I suppose the county determines that they believe that discriminatory activity occurred, the county could bring an action on behalf of that complainant.
They then put it into state court?
Right, it would be a civil action for some type of injunctive relief.
You said there would be no civil criminal penalties.
It wouldn't, it would be civil, so they would only be seeking an injunction. They wouldn't be getting damages or any of that on behalf of the complainant. It's really to change behavior, to change activity. Now, that, that doesn't say that any complainant still has their own rights to bring a private lawsuit or to file a complaint with the EEOC or, or to any of the other, they're not waiving any remedies that they might have by participating in the process.
Well, for the government was going to step into it and how far they want to go, so they still have their own, they can still go through the process on their own like they could today?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's off now.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger?
Kind of a comment on the timeline of when Wake County is expecting, I have three kind of questions. One, the timeline, when they're kind of expecting for everyone to decide, so then we have an idea how long we need to think about this. The other is, and then we'll come back. The other is, and then we'll come back, what, does it have any impact on existing town policies or ordinances that we know of, whether there's overlap? And then, the other is probably the more important, and is there any sort of educational element, or public relations, or outreach as part of this, that the county is gonna fund to let businesses know that this is a thing? I think one of the things that happens, because some of the stuff in here, the hairstyle thing, is new to a lot of people, and they don't understand it. And so, what can happen is this sort of gotcha sort of thing that happens. And so, my question is, what efforts are they putting into educating businesses and accommodations that this is a thing in Wake County, and this is kind of the expectation? Because you can cut off a lot of antagonism and confrontation if people understand what the expectation is, which sometimes there's a problem when somebody says, "Well, I've got this piece of paper," and, you know, so do we, is there any of that in there, or built into what their model is?
To answer your timeline question first, initially, Wake County was looking for a rather soon decision, and that had to do with budget concerns about funding the contract with Campbell University for next year. But since, I believe, Wake County and Raleigh have agreed to split the costs for next year, that there's not the urgency there, and they didn't want, I suspect they didn't want towns to not opt in because the costs were uncertain at the time. So, there's, I don't believe there's an urgency, although they would like to be able to plan for the future as to who all is in. It obviously won't be effective until the town would adopt a resolution to opt in, so it's, the longer you wait, it's not effective. I haven't heard about the public education aspect yet. The portal did go live on February 1st, so it's available on the county website. My suspicion, and I don't know if the managers know anything else, is that they probably want to wait till they know how many towns are opting in before they do a big outreach, so that they're not getting complaints from people, and then having to tell them, "Your town, you're not eligible because your town didn't opt in." That, that's what I suspect, but I don't know if you've heard anything different.
Probably true, but I hadn't heard anything in particular about how they plan to get the word out.
The municipal attorneys that represent each of the jurisdictions, we've been working together to try, you know, to work out some of these aspects in the interlocal agreement, because Wake County would like, one, interlocal, the text to apply to each one, even though each town would be entering into their own agreement with the county. So, did I get all of your questions then?
Yeah, I mean, and I guess, I can see, I can see where they'd be holding off on pushing out the portal, but I think there's another element of, community and business education that actually would serve an even greater, maybe a more important good, to make sure they know what these sort of obligations are, what's expected of them, and some will be like, "Oh, of course not, I would never do that." And then, you know, so I think that might be something I need to bring up with the county commissioners, or some of them, to say there's another element here that you need to consider as you roll this out, but, okay.
Mr. Vance?
I'm sorry, but the town policies?
Oh, yeah, there any overlap, or...
So, as an employer, we are already subject to equal employment opportunity and cannot discriminate on the basis of the federally protected classes. So, we don't anticipate that being an issue, although that is something to consider, is if an employee would complain going through this conciliation process, when our personnel policy already provides a grievance process for town employees who believe that they've been discriminated against. Again, it doesn't contain all of these classes, but could be modified if you wanted that to. So, we already have that process, and then again, all of the town employees have the same rights to file a complaint with the EEOC if they feel that they've been discriminated against as well.
The discussions in the agreement about whether, like, a town employee would have to defer to their in-house process versus this external process, or has that come up?
So, that issue has come up, and that's what the municipal attorneys are trying to work out. I've heard that potentially, the city of Raleigh is going to amend their resolution where they opted in to exclude governmental employers. My guess is that there's quite a few state agencies, as well as some federal offices located in the city of Raleigh, who may have, you know, voiced some concerns about that. Under this ordinance, someone has ninety days to file a complaint after the alleged discriminatory activity. Our grievance process is, requires quicker, you know, notice, so that it's likely that an employee would go through the town's grievance process first. But as the ordinance stands now, if you just opted into the language it is now, employees would have that second opportunity to file for conciliation. So, that's a little bit of an awkward situation, but the county feels that that's not, not an issue at this point. I mean, they're, they're subject, they're subject to their own ordinance like any other employer.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, just, just one question. In reference to this particular ordinance, are you, you asked me that you're providing to information and for direction? Are you asking for, to accept this, this resolution tonight, or...
No, if you're inclined to go forward, it would have to go on a future agenda for adoption, and obviously, if you want to wait a bit to see how the other towns go, that's an option. It's just that Wake County wanted to take your temperature, so to speak, to see if you're inclined, for their planning purposes.
Do you care to, what, well, maybe you've already explained it, but the benefit to the town, amongst other things, as I understand it, would be having the outside source to assist us with any alleged discrimination in this area, and would not necessarily use somebody in the town's time to, to deal with the issue. And I didn't say that very well, but...
Right, with, especially with respect to public accommodations, it would provide an opportunity for citizens, residents of Garner, or even people passing through who experience some type of discrimination, to have an opportunity to raise those concerns and have potentially change made, without the town having to create a program of its own to do that. Again, and that would also go to all the private employers that are located within the town, employees that might not be protected by a personnel policy as strong as the town of Garner's, you know, would have an opportunity, and again, without creating the expense of the town providing this program.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up from me.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm trying to take all of this in, and with the county, and using their portal, I know we have a lot of these policies already in place, and I'm hearing a lot of duplication here, and there's a lot of this I'm trying to bring in and understand here, you know, because I've not seen these issues as long as I've lived in Garner, and not something couldn't get by me, you know? And we handle everything in a very expeditious manner that I've seen, anything that this board, since I've been on this board, it's been handled. And so, I don't understand why the county's wanting to put this out on the towns, when there's a lot of duplication here, and I would, be interested in how the other towns do, and us not rush into something that maybe we don't need to get into. I don't know, there's a lot to be discussed and talked about, I truly believe that, and if I was seeing those issues, I'd be first on board, but I'm, you know, I think everything's always been handled in a very quick manner, and we don't tolerate nothing here in Garner like that, that I've seen. And I'd stand by that a hundred percent, I would agree with that, but I don't, this is a different one, I'm just, I just got some concerns, that's all I'll say.
Mayor, if I may, I think one of the things, you know, as we're talking about it, or what you kind of, you realize is, you know, when discrimination occurs, the cost of pursuing that grievance that is real can be a burden to folks, it can make it inaccessible. And the program is really sort of designed to give what the least means of voice in, when they're discriminated against. And I think that's kind of, it's kind of obvious, but it kind of dawned on me as we were sitting and talking about it, that if it happens to somebody with no resources, this is a resource for them, and it's actually not terribly punitive for the, you know, the one who is aggrieving, the aggrieving party, and actually seems to create a space for education and communication. I don't see it as being particularly antagonistic in its purpose. And I think, with your point, I agree with everything you've said, but I think this sort of extension beyond our own town walls, you know, to employers and private accommodations is where, if we ran the whole town, I think we'd be okay, but unfortunately, we don't. So, those are just my thoughts, as you were speaking, and...
Okay, town manager or assistant manager, if you want to weigh in on this at all?
Yeah, well, only thing...
I'm not saying you should.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, only thing I would say is, a lot, there is some duplication within the town's policies and procedures, this would extend far beyond that, so...
Yes, some of the items listed here are not part of our ordinance at the present time. Did I say that correctly?
Correct, we, like Attorney Jones said...
Particularly with the fact that this would regulate private businesses. Our policies only regulate the relationship as the employer to the employee, and then to some extent, in contracting, we can sometimes require that our vendors and our contractors don't discriminate on the basis of certain protected classes. But this is broader in that it, it does get into, you know, private businesses and private relationships.
Yeah. To Phil's point, I'm not gonna sit here and suggest it, I will know, but the Wake County mayors meet monthly, and I know the managers have regular meetings. It may be that, you know, by the end of this month, I might have some further thoughts to share in regards to information coming from those kinds of meetings, and I don't know if that's, I don't know how much the managers will do, and do they hear from the mayors or council?
I'm not sure if we have a meeting this month or April, but we'll be in constant contact, even outside of our regular meeting schedule about this, if we need to. And the attorneys are talking about it regularly, so...
Right.
... about it and get more information with, it doesn't seem the other municipalities are all running to do it right away, and I don't, don't think it would hurt.
I'm assuming that other municipalities are basing on the same timeframe, they're just sort of hearing about this essentially as we are, so I guess you could say we're all in this order together. So, I don't know that any have, have opted out or turned it down, but I think maybe it just hasn't been presented to them yet, as we have it presented to us tonight. Do you know if that's true? I don't know.
It was adopted in, in October, but not effective until February 1st, and it wasn't until after the portal went live that they basically asked, at least the managers and the attorneys, to consider whether the towns all would opt into this or not. So, I'm not sure what was happening between October and February, other than they were probably creating the portal, establishing the relationship with Campbell University, and doing those kinds of things.
Is this doing strictly the county, or say something happened next week hypothetically, and somebody went to that portal that lived in Garner or Fuquay or anywhere, and lodged a complaint about something, would the county act upon that, as we...
They would not have the authority to if, if the action occurred in Garner, because the ordinance is not effective in, in the municipal limits. So, they would have to tell the person that you're not eligible for this process.
Thank you.
They would have to pursue other remedies.
Right.
They could still, yeah.
Right.
Have to go through their own process of hiring an attorney, get through the legal process, correct?
Right.
Okay, council, go...
My last feedback is, and I'd probably reach out to county commissioners on this, they have to do, be more proactive in working with the businesses. I think it's almost getting a pledge list of businesses that say, "Yes, we will do this." You know, you've got to create some public aware, business awareness of this, and get some opt-in from them, even if they're, they have to do it, but to make them aware of it, and make it voluntary, so that there starts to be that dialogue. It's just, it always causes problems when you try to enforce something somebody doesn't know anything about. So, I think that, I'll probably reach out to the county commissioners and see if they want to track it from another angle, in addition to this, "Hey, you've been aggrieved, go to this portal." It's kind of like, "Hey, we're trying to make it more inclusive, sign up your business up," and they could read and see, you know, this is just another angle, I think, multiple angles would be helpful, so...
I heard again today, I believe it was today, on the news about the discrepancy between what we make for doing the same job what men do in North Carolina. And resolving, I know we're just talking about Wake County, but there's a lot of things that play into the consideration for this, and we may opt into it completely, but it's a bigger, a bigger issue. Assets that we're here now, there's a lot more to consider all the way around.
Okay, council, so I think you were wanting to get a sense of moving forward, how this council, after it gets more information, might, might view this town and its potential to sign on to the interlocal agreement. At this point, I'm not, I'm not trying to hear something that's not there, I'm not hearing anybody say, "We absolutely should not." I'm hearing more of, you know, we're hearing about it now. I guess we'd always like to receive more information, but I mean, if...
Has this, has anybody used it yet? Do we know the outcome of this actual process?
I haven't heard any, the meeting they had in February, it was only about two weeks in, and they hadn't received a complaint yet. But that was one of the issues I raised, is that in the interlocal, it didn't say anything about reporting, and I would think that if the town wants to opt in, it would want to receive some kind of reports, even though the conciliation would be private and confidential, the, the number of complaints that at least came from Garner, and the, the number that are resolved, and the kind of, the areas or types of discrimination would be something, I believe, important information that council would want to receive in the future. So, that was my suggestion of something to add into the interlocal, that there's some kind of reporting requirement, you know? On the one hand, Wake County said, "Well, it's public, you know, some of this is public information," but it wasn't clear that they were gonna break it down by each municipality, so, so that would be something...
For you to push them for that reporting element.
There's a lot of blanks that are not filled in, and we need to... .................................................................................................................................................................................
point, so looking at perhaps May, the first meeting in May to bring this back, and at that time, we'll have more of a sense of which other municipalities have opted in, and also perhaps can get some of the preliminary information about how many complaints have been received by the portal, and whether Campbell has gone through the conciliation process with any complainants, and then again, what's the public outreach and education that they plan to do, so I could report, if you're okay with my assessment of that, report that back to Wake County and tell them that it might be considered again in May.
I mean, I personally think it's reasonable. You know, council's heard it tonight, and has the basics, you know, you might get more information from county commissioners, if you care to contact some of those. I may have more information in talking with some of my fellow mayors, so I think personally it's reasonable to maybe circle back in May. That's essentially two months to do what further inquiry we want to do on our own, or certainly I'll be interested in hearing back from you at that time. Is that okay, counsel?
Sounds good, sir.
Okay. So in the meantime, whatever inquiries you care to make or want to make might be helpful to the individual. So do you have what you need on this, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, counsel. So we are now down to council reports, I believe. There was nothing else, Mr. Manager or Assistant Managers before then, is that right?
I think that's it.
Okay. Well, maybe just before I go, was there any report from either the Assistant Managers? I usually like to see if there's...
No report from me.
Okay, nothing from you, okay. Okay, John, thanks. All right. I will start down here on my right with Mr. Vance on council reports.
Well, in reference to the vacant houses on Garner Road, I noticed that they were gone, and so that's a great improvement in front of the G-PAC, the houses that are there that are gone now. And also, it was brought up at the last council meeting in reference to the wall that heals, and I just have a little bit more information on that. On the 20th of this month, Avery's Borough Baptist Church will be having an event there where we screening of the documentary, The Wall That Heals, contributions to the Vietnam, North Carolina Veterans Contribution to Vietnam War will be screened at Avery's Borough Baptist Church at 3:00 PM, along with the 82nd Airborne Chorus will be the special guest at the event. Just wanted to give, put that information out there in recognition of Vietnam Veterans Day on March 29th.
Thank you. And by the way, there will be a proclamation, I can cover that a little later, to be read at our next meeting in conjunction with this and recognition of Vietnam vets, I think. So was that everything you had, Mr. Vance?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
I have one, I got one. I got one.
You missed your chance.
No, just driving here, the spiritual twist sign, it said, "What if equals fear, even if equals faith." I'll leave you with that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things. The, it's either a tree or a pole that is hanging over a utility line across from Pierce Brothers Roofing Company on the same side of the road as TTD. I know that we've tried to get in touch with Duke Energy several times and gotten no response. I sent an email to Marty Clayton, our community representative, got no response. Where are we with that? I'm at the point now where I feel like calling them every day, just to be a nuisance until they do something about it. It looks horrible, and it's got to be affecting something somehow, but it looks like a swamp there where it's hanging over the line, so what are your thoughts, Mr. Manager?
We'll have to get an update. It's likely not affecting anything, or they probably would have fixed it. We probably do need to defect something, they'd get out there quicker, but we'll just continue to check with them and see if we can get something moving on that.
Something, it needs to come down.
If it's on the lines, it's not something we can mess with, so.
They need to do something, because it's unsightly, to say the least, and it could be dangerous.
It's definitely been reported.
Oh, I understand, I believe it has been, but you know, if it broke once and broke over the lines, then it could break again easily and fall into the road, so that's a safety issue as well. And next, the portion of a tree that is still on the property by the G-PAC on the first piece of property, at first glance, it looks like a tree stump, but it's not. The tree was cut off at the ground, and it's a big, huge log. I think you mentioned that Public Works could pick that up and move it away, so can we ask them to...
It wasn't, because it wasn't part of the contract, so that...
No, it wasn't part of the contract, it's been there forever. But we can, Public Works can remove that for us?
Yes, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. I talked with Brandon Jones, the DOT engineer today, District 5 engineer, about making some repairs at the railroad crossing at Joan Sausage near White Oak. They did some repairs a couple of years ago on one side, and the other side now has deteriorated, and he told me that it was on their list, it would be in the next few months, but it would be done. Okay.
Or have been in contact with some of their folks, too, about that?
Good, good, good. And then the last thing is, do we, our flowers that we have in some of our areas along Highway 70, they look like they need some attention, needed to be weeds pulled out, do we do that, or do we contract that out now?
The contractor is to do that.
It's getting hard to see which are the flowers and which are the weeds in between, so if we could...
Hopefully, with the seasons changing there, do some work on those pretty soon. I know we're going to be mulching some areas coming up pretty soon on the highway.
Okay, Mr. Singh, I recognize you, sure.
Got four items, Mr. Mayor. One, I asked Mr. Mercer this morning to send out a link to a story about summer camps stealing with staffing shortages. Channel 5 was live, the Rexon, this morning, all morning long, reporting on that, and I believe he sent that out. I've also sent him another, they popped up a story about an hour ago about the license plate cameras helping Garner police solve crimes, that's on WRL, and he'll send that link out, too. In our Garner info, we had the tennis court issue on Creech Road, someone contacted me about that also, and I think Ms. Behringer's probably heard of that, heard from that, too. So are we going, is this in our, the TIP, or...
It's in the CIP.
Yeah, CIP, not TIP, I'm sorry.
Well, there's a couple of issues out there at Creech Road, some of it was, you know, the parking lot, damage in the parking lot, and we did patch some of those areas. It is in need of a broader resurfacing, some of its tree roots and things like that, and then the courts do have some cracking. I think, let's see if we got an estimate, we got a quote on that for $108,000 to resurface the tennis courts, so we had some money in our perform, our, you know, ah, public facilities, maintenance, funds that we had, and those funds are going toward the Avery Street Annex roof, I believe, so we don't have any funds in there, but hopefully, you know, we can try to build that fund up to replace the tennis court. So the short answer is, it's on the CIP, but we don't have a time period of when it will be replaced, because the funds have not been set aside for it.
Basically, the middle court is, not, it's not playable, but it's in poor condition, and when it rains, you can't play on it for any time. Hold water.
Got some large cracks, but we'll have to look at the CIP and prioritize all the items, you know, based on the greatest need, so, but it, I mean, we all agree it needs to be done, but right now, we don't know if that's the priority item, and we'll have to see how that comes out.
Okay, that's fine. The other item I have is an item we've been dealing with here in Garner for the last several years, and that is the pedestrian deaths on Highway 401. We've had two now in the last six weeks. We've had them, what, three or four previous, the previous four or five years. I know there's, I know one, DOTs can change parts of 401 to a, it's not a super street, whatever they call it now, the magic name they call it now, but it's to get some of that lit and also dedicated pedestrian crossings, but it's, I mean, it's pitch dark, where they were at down there near the old stage road intersection with 401, it's just pitch black. I mean, it's just no, I mean, you know, and truce people should cross at the crosswalk, but we have, as we all know, a large homeless community down there behind the Walmart, and they go back and forth, and I'm just wondering what the plan is. I mean, we've been dealing with this thing for years, and people are still getting killed. I remember years ago, they were having issues down in Hilton Head, and part of Old Hilton Head is pitch black, there's no streetlights, and the new part, as you get closer to the interstate, is all lit up. And it was pretty obvious when you went down there and looked at the intersection, it was pitch black at stoplights while people were getting killed, and no one could see anything. And I'm just wondering if, what the, where are we with this streetlight process there? I know that may be years away, and the DOT has to approve it, and I don't know if we're going to fund it, they're going to fund it, we're going to, you know, get a grant, what's the plan? Has anybody got a plan?
I don't know. I know, I know we got maybe some updates on when they might do the roadwork.
But I don't know where the, I don't know if the lighting was included as a part of that project, or if it was a separate project, so we'll have to, we'll have to get an update on the lighting part.
Well, at least at that particular intersection, I know they're going to change it so you can't cross over here, you got to go up and do the loop and all that, you would think they would light the intersection there, because again, that's going to be a whole new intersection, you would think they would light it when they built it, because it's going to be still pitch black dark out there, and people have been crossing over there for years, and you're not going to be able, you're going to go up, U-turn, et cetera. Can we find out are they going to light it when they do the intersection, or at least light the intersection?
Yes, we can find it out.
We'll confirm that. I think at one time, there was a desire by council to have some lighting where they weren't planning to have lights, but we can go back and confirm if this project is going to light that whole corridor.
Thank you. I just, it's sad to hear people, this happening, and some people don't have the means to go up and walk up a mile, a half mile, whatever, to where there may be a crosswalk, but they've been hit where the crosswalk is and killed, so it's dark. All right, thank you for the update. That's all.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. Vance, for talking about the wall that heals, it's going to be big doings, and I was talking to some of the folks today and talking about veterans riding motorcycles, they're coming up all the way from Brunswick, Georgia, hundreds of them, picking up more in Savannah, all the way up, and coming out of Virginia, South Carolina, Maryland, all over, and just in their original staging of the motorcycles to bring to Wallin, it's going to be down at Clayton, and we're anticipating 300 to 400 motorcycles, you're going to hear them coming. And being a Vietnam veteran and a Garner veteran, they're going to let any Garner veterans that can ride a motorcycle be in the front of it, and since I am a motorcycle rider, and I have got acquired a Harley-Davidson, I'm going to be on part of that parade. You know, somebody said, well, 70, 72-year-olds can't ride bikes, well, I got news for them, about half of that entourage is going to be in their 60s and 70s, some in their 80s, so, you know, it's going to be a big time, so, but, and it's still volunteer opportunities, so you can go online and check that, and also, and finally, there's going to be some good barbecue down at the Optimist Club, I figure Mr. Dillon's just going to talk about that, and Rodney, I might bring you a plate, how's that sound?
That'll work.
Okay. And that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. And that's Friday on that barbecue, and it's going, can we eat in, or is it still outside?
All drive-through still.
All drive-through?
I'll double-check, though, because I think it is. Mr. Mayor, I have one item.
Okay, go ahead. Yep, all right.
Kathy knew. Actually, driving around a lot more during the day than I have, and noticing there are a lot of dump trucks traveling through Garner, which with all the construction that we're having, and we're going to have for the next few years, our roads, I think, are going to get tore up pretty bad, and so it kind of, not tonight, but it kind of updated the process for how DOT is going to be prioritizing those roads, like Old Stage is one that I just think is going to be a mess in the next few years, and I'm sure there's other state roads that haven't historically had that much heavy-duty traffic on them, but are now having more cars, but also these, just big trucks constantly on them, so if at some point, we could get an update for how DOT prioritizes resurfacing on these, because I think, I don't think there are that many town roads that'll suffer, but I think in the next two or three years, we're going to have some real problems on these state roads, so I kind of want to just get educated on...
Secondary routes.
Yeah, like Old Stage, 1010, all these sort of...
This southern loop down there is where most of them are coming from, even on 50, yes.
But I think, too, a lot of the grading and stuff that's going on, these subdivisions, there's a lot, you're probably right, 80% are probably taking stuff through those secondary roads on 540, but I just think it's, I'm just curious as to how they prioritize those roads, because I just think we're, in a couple of years, some of them are going to be in really bad shape, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And the mayor has just a couple of things. I believe I forwarded to council this information from Tim Stevens, we've talked a lot tonight about the wall that heals, and this is related to that, but he's indicated that he'd like to offer a special tour to town officials, would love to get us all together, I guess at one time for a tour. He says we can fit you in almost anytime from Thursday through Sunday at 2:00 PM, and I guess rather than confirming that it needs to be at that time, I just kind of want to get a feel for council members, if they feel like this is something we can do as a group, or you could get together at a set time to take a tour, sometime on that Thursday through Sunday, if we could do it at 2:00 PM, obviously, that's a stated time, but what say you, counsel? It's a matter of figuring out which one of those days may be okay, so, what about it?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Mr. Matthews will take you going around on a motorcycle ride. Make sure Ms. Behringer's the first one on, because I want to make sure we had, and Rick's out there with the camera.
I bet she could ride down from Clayton if she wanted.
Okay, you're honing in on my report time now, come on. No, the other thing, and maybe all of you got this, just came out from Tim today, this Saturday at 2:00 PM, there will be a sneak preview at the North Carolina Museum of History of the Wall That Heals, the documentary, 30-minute film, about North Carolina's contribution to the war. Doesn't cost anything, so just wanted to pass that along to you. I don't know if you saw it, I saw it in an email from Tim, and I'm hoping and planning to attend that on Saturday. That, this Saturday is the 12th, isn't it? Yeah. So be aware of that, if you will. Probably most of you have heard about opportunities to somehow assist with disaster relief related to the atrocities that are happening in the nation of Ukraine, and all of you may have your own sources, and that's fine, I was just going to let you know, and there are probably others, but I know one civic organization, Rotary Club, has an international organization, and if you care to make any monetary donations, I'm not the point person on that, by the way, but I just wanted you to be aware, but if you have a desire to do that and have your own sources, that certainly is fine, but if you don't, you could consider that, okay? With that, that's all I have, and so we do have a closed session scheduled. Are we ready for that at this time? Okay. I believe the general statute site is 143.318.11A3, suggestion to go in a closed session to consult with the attorney regarding litigation, and also, I guess, I need to cite the other section, is that right, Mr. Attorney, 143.318.11A5, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate. So, counsel, I will entertain motion. Second, all right. Motion probably made in second, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Counsel, let's see, I don't think we can... so I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. Thank you all for your time, staff, uh, those of you who are still here, and, uh, and also